We have Chief Miglianico that would like to introduce a new patrol officer to the town of Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To be brief, I just wanted to take a few minutes to introduce our newest full-time officer, Adam Wright. Adam started with us in 2014 as a part-time dispatcher, worked his way up to a full-time dispatcher, ultimately to a part-time officer, and he was selected to be the next full-time officer when Chief Foley left the position that we needed to fill. So, he graduated from the State Police Academy on Friday, the 24th. I mean, I apologize, after 24 weeks of rigorous training, and he was sworn in yesterday. He's been an asset from day one, and I'm sure he's gonna have a great career here.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, and is he on tonight?
He is on tonight.
Lucky guy.
Yep. He started yesterday, his first shift, so...
I see the academy still teaches you how to shine boots.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, they look sharp.
Thank you.
Excellent.
He's good to go. I just wanted to introduce him to all of you and put a face to a name.
Excellent.
All right, that's great.
Still looking. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and stay safe.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
All right, so, I don't have any other announcements this evening. Is there anyone here for anything that's not currently on our agenda? Seeing as no, we'll move into the first item, which is a library trustee joint appointments and possible votes for De Fontaine and De Harvey.
It does look like we haven't performed here yet. Is that an issue, or...
I think it's our appointment, right?
It's a joint appointment because it's an elected position.
Oh, okay. All right, so we have to wait for them to have a call.
Do you have more people coming?
No. But they both work almost at this time.
It's not like a hearing, so you can put it off if you'd like.
Sure. All right, well, we'll give it a few minutes and circle back to it. So, which brings us to the poll attachment agreement with Verizon, the municipal version, and possible votes.
In your packet is the municipal version of the poll attachment that you approved and signed back in August of 2017. After getting the documents back and filing them, I realized that they were different than what... What they sent us back was different than what you signed. That being, it was the municipal version with an added section 2.7. I did have town council review it, and he has approved it to form. Because it is different, you would need to re-vote, and I ask that you authorize Matt Wojcik to sign the document.
Okay. Who wants to make a stab at that motion?
I move that we approve the amended license agreement and authorize the town administrator to sign it on behalf of the town.
I'll second that motion.
It was made by Dave and seconded by Mike. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so, brings us to opening the warrant for November 13, 2018, special town meeting and close the special town meeting warrant for November 13, 2018, on September 27, 2018, at 2:00 PM with possible votes. Well, with votes.
I'll make the motion that reopen the warrant for the November 13, 2018, special town meeting.
I'll second.
And to close the warrant on September 27.
I'll second that one, too.
Both motions were made by Mike and seconded by Tim. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just point out to the townspeople, this is gonna be an interesting town meeting, special town meeting, and we hope we have lots of people show up and participate.
That would be a nice... Be a nice change. Well, the last town meeting was pretty... Pretty good with participation.
It's the special ones that tend to be lightly attended.
True. All right, so this brings us to the property use policy first reading. So... And it's quite the policy.
I'm sorry, but they're all here now, so if you want to go ahead and take that one, then they can leave.
How about if I do that?
Okay.
So, we're gonna pause on that one. All right, so we're back to the library trustee joint appointments for Fontaine and Harvey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The trustees wanna...
Yeah, the trustees wanna...
Come on up.
Grab a seat.
You're gonna be filling two vacancies that were opened up to... One, Joe Bee Geely had resigned. He was a life member, so the board, the life members, took another elected member and made her a life member, so that opened up one of the elected positions. The other elected position was opened up when Kevin Chagru was appointed to the Board of Registarians. So, you're gonna be appointing two members who will be appointed until the next election.
Well, I believe one is filling my position would be 2019?
No, because it's an elected position, they are both being appointed until the next election. They will both have to run.
Okay.
And do we have both applicants here? So, Dawn and...
One's in the back.
And Dana.
And Dana.
Just so you know, that when they do run, then they will fill the position. I'm pretty sure they will fill the position for the term.
So, they can pick it up between them.
Right.
We need an extra seat.
Okay. Don't worry. We'll worry about that.
Yes, maybe sit here.
All right, so, Dawn and Dana, got that one figured out.
Yeah, it could be the other way around.
So, first of all, thank you both for volunteering, at least for the interim. And do you both plan on running?
I guess.
You guess?
Yeah, I'm not sure what's involved, and I don't think there's much with campaigning, but I'll have to do.
Campaign in Douglas is... That's hard work, right there. So, I think most of the campaigning in Douglas is done on Facebook now, so you don't even have to go to the door anymore. All right, and you guys are both pretty actively involved with the library now, I'm assuming, and set in a few meetings, understand how...
Yeah, we sat in a meeting, volunteered the other day, pick up library books monthly.
And the trustees feel good about these?
Just a point of order. Don't you have to call your meeting to order for us to be able to vote?
Oh, that's you, Dana. Oh, oh, so, I'm sorry, I forgot that this is a joint meeting. So, we will call the Douglas Board of Library Trustees to order at 7:09 PM on Tuesday, September 18th.
Okay, now you can talk.
Now we can talk.
Aye.
Both candidates have come highly recommended from other board members as far as their enthusiasm and interest during the last... The last year with our financial situation, that they stepped up to the plate and really did a lot of time volunteering to help with it, to help to support the library.
So, I would be happy to entertain any motions on our side.
I would move that we appoint... Do we want to do separate motions? Do we want to do separate motions?
Doesn't matter.
I don't think it matters.
Okay. I'd move that we appoint Dawn Fontaine and Dana Harvey as library trustees.
Second. Roll call vote.
So, it was made by Dave, seconded by Tim. Looking for a roll call vote.
Tim, aye.
Mike, aye. Kevin Morris, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
I believe the...
Thank you.
You folks need to vote.
Mona Williams, aye.
Say that.
Mona Williams, aye.
L. H. Chesbrough, aye.
Oh, that's right, you got married. Yes!
Congratulations.
Thank you!
Danielle Morrow, aye, and I'm still married.
Congratulations.
Kate Anderson, aye.
Barbara Van Reed, aye.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Congratulations to everyone.
So, they'll be on the same ballot voting, all right?
Yep.
So, yeah, you guys are welcome to campaign with Tim and I, because we're both up for elections.
When's the expiration again? Three...
Nineteen, right?
So, they'll be up to the next election, which will be May of...
May of...
2019.
Right, so I would check with the town clerk, though, to find out the timeline for getting on the ballot and everything for elections, because there is a timeline.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, so now we...
Property use.
Going back to property use, first reading.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, well, quickly, the town has an existing policy for the use of town property that was written some time ago and approved by the Board of Selectmen. It was drafted by town council, I made a couple of updates to it and a couple of grammatical changes, but not a whole lot. I've added a section at the end after the waiver form. There's the insurance form which needed to be updated. Just a minor thing, since the consumption of alcohol is not allowed on town property, all of these provisions in the insurance policy that refer to consumption of alcohol can be taken out, but not necessarily, unless you want to change the policy. The rest of what's here is new, and it's a lot of words, but really what it boils down to is we'll do our best, I'll try to identify every single last item in the town which may have nostalgic value to the folk of the town, to be put on a list, and that list is protected procedurally, it's not protected in substance. It would only rise to that level if it were on the National Historic Registry or something significant like that. The point would be, though, that if something is gonna be altered or repaired or replaced, and there's something that people are attached to, there should be some process, a hearing. That's what I heard coming out of the discussion of the Tiger, is that if we had had a chance to talk about this, we probably would've come to a slightly different conclusion. So, all I had tried to do here is build a process that would allow for a list, so that you get new people in all the time, may not appreciate the same... A tree or a fixture in a building, the same way folks have been here for 20, 25 years. Just make sure there's a little bit of a stopgap there in case somebody has to make the change. So, that simple concept took a long time to write out. My apologies for a page and a half of verbiage, but the one issue that did come up in drafting this is, it has never really been sorted out in Douglas, from what I can tell, from the folks I've spoken to and what I've read. Which board has jurisdiction over what? And, we'd go all the way back, the town clerk went back to 1940, when Town Meeting in Douglas adopted the relevant state statute dealing with the creation of Recreation Commission, which in the statute, it's called a park commission, but it's the same thing. Really, every property the town has taken control of for recreational purposes since that time is under the direct control of the Recreation Commission, and they would have to adopt the same or a similar policy for us to be consistent. So, I think after first reading, we should kick this over to those... To that body in particular, to see if that membership agrees. You know, let's get some sense of what the consensus is amongst the two boards, because the two boards together, along with the school committee, pretty much exercise control over all the property of the town. But, like most people, I think I defaulted to the idea that the Board of Selectmen are the chief policymaking body of the town, and therefore had that purview over all of your properties, but it really isn't true. The Recreation Commission can delegate that responsibility back to you, or to the town administrator, but they can't... You can't make the policy for them without that delegation back. Okay?
One question?
Sure.
The policy about alcoholic beverages not being allowed on town property, there's nothing in there that's gonna affect or change Oktoberfest or anything like that, correct?
So, my understanding is the alcohol is not served on town property. It is...
It's on private property.
Right, I know it's served there. Okay, as long as we're not changing it.
That's the only reason they're allowed to do it.
Understood.
All right. We all good with item four?
It's the first reading. I'll send it... Yeah. I'll send it to Rec. and I'll send it to the school committee. Okay. Say it's been through first reading and then give them the time.
And then we'll see if they adopt it, or if they defer back to us, or where they choose to go with it. All right, well, Mr. Wojcik, this brings us to the town administrator evaluation process. Which was quite a document that you sent along.
Yeah, talk about complicating it.
We like that, scale of one to 10.
If you ignore the complications, I know it's a war and peace. I guess nothing makes you more sensitive to things like this unless you've had a bad experience with it in the past. That frankly is where I'm coming from, I think, since we appear to be in a good place right now, now's the time for us to write a really solid evaluation instrument that's not really gonna, I don't think fundamentally change where we are as a group right now after the first year, but which will set a tone, and really what one of the things I'm trying to do here is set a tone for the rest of our staff, for our department heads and for those who will be evaluated by our department heads, that from top to bottom in the organization, we will tie the evaluation directly to what is in your job description, and what is expected of each and every person in the organization, from the town administrator right through. So, in order to make sure that the instrument captures what's expected of the position, I went through the various authorizing pieces of law, and pulled out those relevant provisions and incited them for you. We've gotta make sure that those things are somehow captured and complied with as we go forward. And then I just... I quickly went through the existing evaluation instrument, which, in case it's not obvious, I hate it. But, only because there are 20 categories, which makes your job actually kinda tedious. Some of them are repetitive, some of them frankly refer to things that you could not absorb, unless you were here all the time and violating basically that separation between oversight and day-to-day management. So, not to put either side of the discussion in a bad position, I tried to focus on building an evaluation instrument around the things that one taxpayer would expect him to know about what's going on in town, or that you could get from fairly... Either from reports from the administrator's office, or from simple inquiry, without having to have the Spanish Inquisition, if you would, to find anything out. It's my view that people have difficulty with capturing three ideas, it's not in your evaluation instrument, and I've never seen it anywhere else either. One of them is risk management. There's a almost semi-hidden task for town administrators and town managers everywhere, which is to understand what is the town's profile for legal liability and for financial responsibility, occurring from the things that we do on a regular basis. That's part of proactive management, and is encouraged by Maya, I think, through their training programs and through the way they approach us as our vendor. But, it's also something we have to pay attention to, so, small example, but I think it's important. Nothing riles people up like an injury to a child. If we are going to have playgrounds where we invite children to come play on our equipment, then we have to make sure everything's up to safety standards. So, this year, we applied, you know, a fair... Fairly large amount of mulch to the playground on Martin Road, because that's part of risk management. We're inviting kids to go up on monkey bars and slides and everything else, and it is your problem if they fall and hurt themselves, especially if you're not really doing all the simple maintenance things that you're supposed to do. There's a duty of care when we attract people to a public event or a public place. So, those are the kinds of things that we have to pay attention to in the town administrator rule. The other two things, the relationship around setting the tone for the town is really driven by the Board of Selectmen, but there's... Because you are hiring town administrators and managers with experience, your expectation, I would think, as a board, would be, you would get some input on what the direction of the town should be, what our standards of operation should be, they're separate issues, really. Are we setting high standards for all of our staff, on the one hand, and on the other hand, are we headed in the right direction? Can we, if asked, provide people with a 30-second elevator speech? The town of Douglas is on a path to... Do what? To professionalize town government, to stabilize its finances, you know, just what is that punch list of things, so that everybody who doesn't follow every single thing that the board does, or that the administrator does, has a sense that the town isn't powerless, it's moving in a direction, and the decisions being made or being recommended at Town Meeting are part of a unified thought about getting to a desirable place. So, I added those things in, I cut the list down to 10, and so my recommendation to you is that we look at communication, direction setting, standard setting, representation of the town and the board, personnel management, collective bargaining, operations management, fiscal management, asset management, and risk management as the fundamental pillars for evaluating the administrative position. So, let's just do on it, and I'll answer any questions you might already have, but...
No, you are detailed enough that I don't think that any questions are really gonna show up.
I mean, it seems like a fair evaluation process to me. I wouldn't mind adopting that and moving forward, and then taking this and having us sit down individually, like just send us an email, soft copy of the form that we can fill out, and put our assessment based on that, so that way we can actually do what we've been trying to do for...
Since June.
So...
The other thing we need to come out of this with is a list of goals that the board is directing the town administrator and the entire administration to try to achieve.
Yeah, so, I would agree.
What we've done in the past, I don't know if it still makes sense, is to have a separate meeting, with that being the sole topic, of sitting together as a group and sort of trying to brainstorm and come up with those goals, and coming up with some sense of agreement. So, it probably makes sense to do that again.
Yeah.
So, why don't we... If we use this as the mechanism, why don't we plan on having that discussion on the October 2nd meeting?
Well...
That's cutting it really short, Kevin.
Yeah. The second, you've got the warrant article discussion.
Mm-hmm. That's second, it's two weeks from now.
Yeah. It takes you more than two weeks to evaluate people's performance?
Do we have the... I'm not sure what... I glanced at what you sent us. Did you actually send us the instrument today?
I sent you what is gonna be the core of the instrument. We'll reformat it so you can circle numbers and write comments, but the content is done.
Or I can move it to the 16th meeting, if you feel more comfortable with that.
I think that would be better, yeah. Yeah.
That's fine. That's why I said I...
Yeah, then we'll do that, but I think we need to schedule a separate meeting outside of our regularly scheduled meetings.
On a separate night, or just after hours, or...
A different Tuesday night, I don't know, it doesn't matter.
How about the night?
Yeah.
What's that?
The ninth.
October 9?
It's in between the... Does that work?
FinCon meeting that night?
Yes, but they can always meet in the select... These guys can be in the select's office. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're getting ready for Town Meeting, so there's gonna be a lot of boards meeting.
I can't make that.
Are you planning a golf tournament that day?
No golf, work.
I can make the ninth for what it's worth. I think we all should be here, when we say golf.
I agree. I guess my concern is, is, you know, it's been kind of a pressing item since June, when we were, you know, according to Mr. Wojcik's contract, bound to be giving him his one-year evaluation, so I don't want to push it much further past, you know, one of the meetings in October. So, if we have to...
The meeting after the...
After the 16th?
Yeah, the following meeting after that.
23rd?
The 23rd?
Yeah.
Can you do that, Tim?
Let's see.
Okay. Even if I can't, I'll still do it.
I probably should check, too.
It works here.
Yeah, I can do the 23rd.
Seven?
Yeah, I can do it as well.
We'll do 7:00 PM?
So, goals and evaluation?
Well, are we gonna do that the same night as well? Might as well.
Yeah.
Well, might as well make it a matinee.
Matinee?
Well, I mean, and all of us collectively can kinda come up with some ideas in between now and then, and put down what we feel should be in the direction that we're trying to move forward.
Okay.
All right. This is... So, we're good on this part of it? Do we have to vote to actually take that into the process now, or...
I think you should, because you've had an instrument that you used with Mr. Guzinski all those years, you're changing.
So, I move that we approve the new instrument as presented by the town administrator.
Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Killing trees.
Huh?
Killing trees.
Absolutely. So, now it's the authorize Board of Selectmen agents and possible votes, which I believe is why my friend Nick is still here. So, this was stemming around the... Where is that? Is this it?
So, on the advice of Town Council...
Yes, here it is.
We reviewed the record and determined that, as of yet, the Board of Selectmen as licensing authority for the town of Douglas has not yet established the police department as their authorized agents for enforcement of its liquor licensing rules.
Well, let's take care of that now.
And you do need to do that, if that's what you intend to have happen.
So, right now, we have to enforce it?
It would seem that way.
Following on Mr. Hughes' comment, I would make an immediate motion that we authorize the Douglas police and fire departments and members thereof to act as agents for the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second.
Pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 63.
Second.
We're good now? All right, so it was made by Dave, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I think, I don't know, should we pass over seven and wait for how? Put a general consensus on it?
Yeah.
Yeah? All right, so we're going to pass over item number seven, which brings us to the minutes for the September 4, 2018, meeting and possible law and votes.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 4.
I'll second.
Made by Tim, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Brings us to your report, Mr. Wojcik.
So, we have a couple of procurements, bids to open on Thursday. We'll be opening a bid for a bus chipper attachment for the highway department. We'll be opening a bid for heating and fuel supply for this building and the middle school, which have smaller tanks than the rest of the school buildings, and we got into quite a silly, in my opinion, silly garfuffle with the collective buying group that the school is a member of, really not negotiating on behalf of the town, and being willing to go along with a delivery fee that was very large, imposed by a new vendor. We're gonna see if we can beat that price, because it had to do with the size of the tanks. So, we're gonna have to bid, see if we can beat that price plus fee, because it's kind of silly to do that. We have the new doors for the municipal center gym are in. They were delivered to the highway department. They'll be installed in the next couple of weeks. I'm sure people noticed it rained today. I don't know if it's still true or not, but earlier this afternoon, parts of Walnut Street were closed, and parts of Pine Street were closed due to some water flowing over the roadways. The culverts weren't able to move the water fast enough, so obviously, when it clears up, I'm sure Highway will be looking at the culverts themselves, make sure they're clear, but that was a consequence of some four inches of rain in a little bit more than an hour, which is a lot for anybody to have to deal with. Wallem Lake Road was ground up in preparation for paving, so the flooding, the flash flooding today had a little bit of an impact on that. Those in the neighborhood would've seen the guys out there putting the road back together. It's still the plan to pave tomorrow, that particular stretch of roadway. That's pretty much all I have. We have some revenue-enhancing things to talk about, which is, knowing that it was on the agenda, it's what we've been focusing some of our attention on. I will point out that I will be attending a meeting in Sutton to discuss the future of natural gas service coming across 140... which is, knowing that it was on the agenda, is what we've been focusing some of our attention on. I will point out that I will be attending a meeting in Sutton to discuss the future of natural gas service coming across 146, on their end of town. This is in connection with their Mass Works grant application. I was invited to participate, I intend to, to go and try to represent the town's best interests on that issue. That's most of what I have for you this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Okay, so we have any old business? Seeing none, any new business? Seeing none again? I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Is that moving?
Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Tim, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.